This is City Council Regular Meeting, January the 12th, 2015. Italy, Texas. Ms. Cockerham, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor James Hobbs.
Here.
Greg Richards.
Here.
Paul Cockram.
Here.
Rodney Guthrie. Frank Jackson. Stephen Farmer.
Here.
Mayor, would you head the quorum?
Okay, all of us rise and say we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Ms. Richard, would you give the comment?
Go ahead and thank this day and thank the Lord for this meeting tonight. We just asked you to be with each one that's here. Ask you to be with Councilman Jackson, help him get over his sickness. And just pray that decisions tonight that we make tonight will be pleasing over you. And forgive us for the times we said yesterday before asking in Christ's name. Amen.
Ms. Cockerham, would you show that Councilman Guthrie is here? Do the proclaimations. Who's receiving the proclaimations from the school?
Me and my student.
Mr. Glover, yes, sir. Where is Jeremiah Glover, instructor of the 7th through 12th grade art and graphic design class at the Italy High School? And where is Joseph Glover? Has a bachelor's degree in fine arts, graphic design, and from Abilene Christian University in 2006. Whereas under the direction of Jeremy Glover, the Italy High School Art Graphic Design Class participation in in the artistic design and celebrate the creation of the Christmas mural that we had across the street. Whereas the mayor and governing body of Italy are proud to acknowledge the Italy High School Art Graphic Design Class for such commendations. Now therefore it be proclaimed that I, James Hobbs hereby declare that Italy Independent School District, Mr. Jeremiah Glover and talented art students Zachary Mercer, Pedro Salazar, Haley Turner, Luffy Recan, Josie Perkins, and Brendan Hutton. Are they all here? Well, anyways, on behalf of the city and myself, I want to congratulate you. That was a fine, fine piece of art. Thank you. It was all screen right here. We'll face the camera.
Please.
Please.
Let me get one more. Y'all ready?
No, not yet.
Now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I don't know if y'all all got to see the mural that they put together, but it was awesome.
Very impressive.
Next is going to be Officer of the Year presented by Chief Sean Martin.
Every year we have two major awards that we give out. One is our Rookie of the Year and another is the Officer of the Year. Both of them are voted on by members of the department. The first one I'll read, the Rookie of the Year.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
Would you have your office yours? Come on in.
They want you all over.
Yeah, I think they want you to be there.
Y'all are holding up progress.
The Rookie of the Year award was voted on by members of the police department. We have two officers up for the award this year, Officer Saxton and Officer Click. Both the officers were nominated by their peers. The Rookie of the Year has shown steady improvement since he started with the department. He supports his fellow officers and has truly been an asset to the department. He's willing to take on extra responsibility and will do anything that is asked of him. He's always willing to come in early or take on extra shifts if needed. He is a dedicated member to this department and the Rookie of the Year is Guy Saxton. The Officer of the Year is also nominated by members of the department. We had three officers nominated this year. This officer's, the one the award has been toward the tops of the Department of Arrests, Citations, and Calls for Service. And has also taken on extra responsibility of coordinating national night out. He's participated in the Shop with the Hero program by playing in the annual softball game. And he also went with the children in shopping this year. He has continued to be an asset to the police department and Officer of the Year is Jason Cherry.
All right, thank you, sir. Congratulations on both of those. Okay, item number three is consent items, the approval of City Council minutes for December the 8th, 2014. And the approval of the bills to be paid. And the item C, the approval of earned compensatory time. May I repeat all of that? Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Guthrie to approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
I've got a second by Councilman Cockerham. All in favor of discussion? I just want to be discussion time.
So going on the bills, I'm going to kind of go over to our confident wall statement. I don't know, you may or may not be able to answer this for us, but if we go on page six, down to streets, and we look at street paving, we have $18,654.20 that we've spent so far. We're over budget, we're 186 percent over budget. Where did this money come from that we're over budget? So it looks like it's $8,654.20. Do you know where that money came from?
I know that on your budget, there are line items that make up each one of these line items. And to be able to go in and to tell you everything on this, I would have to go in our footbooks and look that up to find out what went into, that made that number up.
Okay.
I think some of that had to do with out by the highway.
So when we know we're about to go over 100 percent on a budget, we should be putting in an amendment for the council to approve? Correct?
I think that if you have a question about it, if it goes over 100 percent, that you should ask some questions about that. Or, you know, that would be something that would be a question that you would ask at that time.
So, well, the proper steps, we should be, if we know that we're going to spend this amount of money, so if we have $5,000 left in the bank on that line item, and we know it's going to cost $10, we know it's going to put us over 100 percent to budget. So therefore, somebody should be doing an amendment to the budget or to that line item. Correct?
Well, I know that if your budget is set, 100 percent is your budget. Once you go over 100 percent, you're going over budget.
Correct.
And as far as making amendments to that, that is something that you would want to, you know, if you want to ask questions about. As far as making a true amendment, that's going to cover where you took the money and where you put it.
Well, we should be doing an amendment to that. It's not that we shouldn't be asking questions, we should be doing amendments to that. But we're not doing it because I've caught it twice now. If you look on page two, under inspections, we have a budget of $5,000. We spent $8,550. We're $13,550 over. 371 percent over budget. We should have done an amendment on this as well before it got to this point. But my question is, is where is this money coming from? Right now, we're just, we're plugging and playing, but it's not showing us where the money's coming from. It's got to be coming from somewhere. And for us to effectively run a budget and keep our eye on expenses, we have to do amendments on this. And know where our money's going. Right now, I have no idea where this money's going. Nothing against any of you guys, but I mean, we have to, I mean, this is why there are laws and policies and procedures in place because we have to do this in order for us to sustain as a city. And by us not doing this, I mean, this is the reason why we're hurting financially. Because this is not being taken care of. The other one I had was, another one I wanted to bring attention to was on page four. Dues and membership, we're at 141 percent over budget. Again, now that, I know the dues may have went up a little. And if so, we need to notate that and do a budget amendment on that as well. And there's a few others, and then should, now on the ticket rider supplies on page five. And I just wanted to call the next few out just to kind of let you know that it's close to 100 percent. So if we buy any more supplies, then we should be doing budget amendments on this. We're at 94.8 percent to budget on the operations and maintenance up at the top, the ticket rider supplies. We only have about $25 left on that. So our next purchase is probably going to put us over. So we need to do a budget amendment on that if it gets to 100 percent. And then the next one would be on the same page, operations and maintenance. This is vehicle repair and maintenance for the police department, which the chief and I have already talked about it. But it's at 96.6 percent to budget. I know we're going to probably spend more than that in maintenance on vehicles. We're only three months in the year, you know, within to the fiscal year. So we probably need to go ahead and start looking at doing a budget amendment for that as well. And then the last one would be under page three. And the attorney fee. Right now, we're not in too much trouble, but we're at 51.9 percent to budget on that. We need to keep an eye on that because I just saw a check that the mayor signed for $2,200 for him. I don't know if that was included or not in this percentage, but as we stand right now, we're projected to go over that. So we kind of need to keep our communications with the attorney down a lot. Or we're going to go over on that as well. And then the last one is utilities on page three. Sorry, I left this one out. Right now, we're at 15,574. We are budgeted at 5,800. We're $9,774.18 over. Again, the question goes, where did that money come from? And why did we not do a budget amendment on that? And we're at 268 percent over budget on that. And I think that was, thanks, Ron.
Why isn't the attorney here? The attorney?
He was, you wouldn't ask him, because we didn't have anything on there.
There was nothing on here relevant.
And to answer your question about the attorney bills being up to date, from what I understand, the attorney, that this last check was up to date.
Okay, but is it reflected in this property? That's what I'm wondering.
I can answer that.
Okay.
When was this, when was this?
This was the eighth.
One eighth?
This was the eighth, but when was the check signed?
We're about to do it.
So it might not be in there, then?
May or may not.
Depending, she did it at 3:24.
But it's only going to go up a few percent? So I mean, you're maybe looking at 55 percent if it's not in.
If it was a bill, it would be also listed under unpaid bills. If it was a bill that was included into your budget, it would be posted on the unpaid bills. You would find it there. Okay, because those amounts have already been taken out of your profit and loss as well.
I'd like to have those numbers checked, too. I can't redeem these things right here. Jeff, do you know, I mean, just curious, as far as the paving stuff, where we purchased $18,000 worth of stuff already?
I couldn't see that, but it's probably right.
We purchased quite a bit, okay.
The paving, yeah, some of that has come out of the street out there.
From the hallway?
Yes, some of that was from that. And me not seeing all the payments that come in and go out, I can't really tell you that now. But I could look it up on footbooks and tell you.
Is that something you can provide for us in our packet each month?
That would be serious expression.
That from dates to dates.
Yeah. I mean, I would request that, to have that in the packet.
I think the inspections, a lot of that has to do with what's going on out there, which will eventually be a wash.
Right.
But that should, that money should be coming back.
Correct, but my question on that, though, now, is if it comes back, it probably, it should come back into that same line item.
Yeah.
That way it does count.
I'll cancel that.
Right. But yeah, I would request if we could get that, like.
There is an item code breakdown, and you can find out what is in each one of those codes that are on your P and L. That is a possibility, you can do that.
Okay, Jeff, if you can put that in your notes or request that for the council to see in their packets at the end.
I do appreciate what we've got. This is what we've been asked for, it's disturbing, but this is exactly what we need to keep control of the budget, which I hope likely won't in certain areas.
Now, can I ask a question? You're asking for a breakdown, are you talking about a breakdown for each line code? Or codes that are at a certain percentage?
I mean, personally, at this point in time, I'd like to see what's on each line item, coming in and going out.
I just wanted to make sure I'm getting it to right.
Which I do know that's a lot of paperwork. However, there's some trouble areas that we need to see immediately. And I think probably before next council meeting, if they can just put it in our box.
But those line items are put in to this, correct? I mean, or just these numbers is all, you know, you know what I'm saying? There's something beneath this that shows us exactly where we spent all of this. I mean, might say something like, you know.
Each one of your general ledger number out here, your 50, your 10-6410, they all have what checks make up each one of those, what you paid for, and money that came back into that line item would be stated on that report.
No, you don't have the breakdown. So on the, so on the P and L, it'll break it down individually, like what's coming in, is what she's saying.
You want to see it specific.
Right, yeah.
Like under inspections, you would see all the checks that went out to pay for inspections, or any money that came in for inspections.
Right. Yeah, and that's what I.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have.
Ron, do you have anything else? Councilman Greg. Okay, all in favor? Record looks like too far, and Councilman against? Two. Ms. Murdock is here to answer some questions.
We might need to have a call meeting about this. This is, you know, but like I said, we need to, we need to.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against paying these at this time until we get further clarification from Ms. Murdock.
So the nays are three?
The nays will be three, the ayes will be two. Until we have a call meeting of some sort and get these line items straightened out. Okay, let's move on to number four, citizens' comments.
Mayor, I have Karen Mathewitz.
Good evening. I'm going to try to make this fast because I want to make it to the school. And so I don't want anything grabbing. When I'm not happy, or when I'm happy, y'all know it. And when I'm not happy, you definitely know it. And two of you caught it today. I'm very upset with the spending, and I'm going to tell you just a couple that have really got me reeling. And I'm going to say shame on y'all for spending my money, because it is my money. When I worked in an office, even in this office in here, on boss's day, we pay for whatever the bosses got. I didn't expect the citizens to pay for bosses' gifts. And I'm looking today on the expenses and what checks were written, and we have bosses' gifts. Shame on y'all. You can answer if you want to, but that money is too tight. If they want something for their boss, let them buy it. If his officers or suit want something for him, they need to pay for it, we don't. Okay, spending is so out of line. I'm on a budget at home, and I stick to it. I don't have a choice. I expect y'all to be better stewards with my money. I think there's one more thing. I think you need a criteria for citizen of the month. And the reason I'm saying this, I'm not upset with anybody that's gotten it. But we have fire department personnel that get out in the middle of the night, and they fight fires, they protect us. We have officers that live here, that are involved in every aspect of this city. And then it goes to people that I don't see volunteering for anything. So I think y'all need to come up with a criteria and give us some input. I should be able to do something in writing and say, John Doe did such and such. And y'all take that into consideration. Okay, that's just an objection. Or get rid of it completely. I want it fair. The other thing, I'm on the warpath. Charles, since you're here, when was the pavilion finished? How long has that been finished? Two years?
Yeah, well, it was Christmas festival.
Okay. Before they started tearing that down, I got a phone call because my parents' memorial pot was in front of the community center. Frank Jackson called me and said, Karen, we're getting ready to start that. Would it be okay with you if we moved your parents' pot to keep it safe? And when we finish, we will move it back. I said, no problem. Okay, I waited six months after it was finished. I asked City Hall to please get my parents' pot moved from down on the end back where it belongs. I waited, and I waited. I turned in another work order, please move the pot. And I know they've got a lot to do, but folks, two years to get one work order? Terry and I visited, we walked across the street. She said, yeah, it could go here. I said, fine. She said, I'll get it done. That's been this summer. I went in City Hall the other day because I wanted to plant flowers in my parents' pots. That's what I do. They refused to take a work order because they said one had already been turned in. I'm asking what y'all want me to do, or what can I do to get my parents' pot moved back where it belongs?
It'll be done by the end of the week.
You promised me. Because I've been lied to, and I've been promised. They'll promise something you're not going to do.
If I'm going to get some people to move it myself, I will get it done there.
Because if you don't move it, then it needs to come to my house. I'll pay for it. Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mathewitz.
Thank you.
Do you have any suggestions on that? Get with me later on this week.
Okay.
We'll see what we can come up with, the criteria.
Thank you.
Right now, there is.
There's not any. And it's a popularity contest, and it really should not be that way. It should be for people.
I wouldn't say it's popularity contests.
Well, it's who you know.
Well, some of the people I don't even know.
Well, that's my point.
That's my point right there.
Yeah, no, I'll be happy to help, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathewitz. This is next on the.
Charles House.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. Karen kind of hit everything on the nail on the head when she said it. You know, I look over this, and it's, any business would be banked up and gone. And I want you to ask yourself, so I ask myself, how can a city that is bringing in more money in the history of our town have streets that look like today? Downtown dirty like it is. I can't fathom where our money's going. So, I said, Karen hit that, and I'm sure y'all are going to go look into that and get it straightened out. I just, the citizens deserve a lot, a lot better than what we're getting. We have gravel in the streets out there, and we got $100,000 worth of patching machine. So, little over. Uh, but on the, on the bright side, that's the main reason I'm here, for the bright side. Uh, the people may know, uh, they may not know, but you know, uh, we applied for a, a grant through Texas Parks and Wildlife last August. Uh, it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars with a matching of fifty, and so total of a hundred thousand dollars. We received it. It goes towards our city park. The official deal is January twenty-second in Austin. Uh, if I can get off, I'm gonna run down there and meet with our grant writer. Uh, and hopefully it's a three-year project, uh, so we can do it over three years. And hopefully you'll see a very great family-oriented city park. And I'll kind of get real quick on it, it's gonna, uh, all new playground equipment, not little Ricky Dick, uh, kind of like you said, walk section, get some there. But it will be covered, so in the summertime, it's shaded. Uh, an eighty-eight pavilion for the senior citizens and the handicapped to get over to watch ballgames, sand volleyball, uh, hopefully, uh, half-court basketball and some, around the walking trails, some places where you'll stop, you'll like pull up, set up, that's kind of exercise there. So it's a, a great community deal where the family can go, you can walk and hopefully in sixty degrees except for when you're, uh, across from the concession stand where you're not able to see your kids playing on the playground. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Charles, thank you for your time and effort into this, uh, course.
You're welcome.
Joan Gabroski.
Ms. Joan Gabroski.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, come. Well, since we're on the subject of the budget, I didn't get to look at this stuff until I picked up the packet over there, but I had some questions on it too. Where as Terry was paid mileage at fifty-seven point five and Rhonda was paid at fifty-six, IRS, everybody should be paid according to the IRS calculation for mileage. So why is there a difference in what Terry got paid and what Rhonda got paid?
I think that's the miles. She, you turned in fifty-six point five and she turned in fifty-six.
Oh, okay. The way it's written here, it makes it look like it's the rate.
So I saw that too, but I was gonna ask Rhonda about that.
Oh, okay.
The payout is way different.
Oh, I didn't, I saw, I just saw mileage.
You got fifty-seven, fifty-seven point five miles and fifty-six, so one's paid out at a hundred and forty dollars and one's at sixty.
A hundred and forty-five, fifty-nine, and one is sixty, seventy-nine. And one is fifty-seven point five miles and one is fifty-six miles.
Right, it's point five six. It's times the mileage.
Right, okay. So, but those figures are different. Like it's in our packet and it's different.
It's from the distance that we found.
It's the same, but it's the same.
It'll be the same rate.
It's the same rate, but different mileage.
But it's only half a mile. No, a mile and a half.
Yeah.
But there's a big difference in what was paid.
Something's not calculated right on here.
Where, where are you looking?
It's on the account, click report, page two. This, this report here.
Right, okay, you're talking about the registry?
On page two.
It's at fifty-seven point five for a hundred and fifty-eight, forty. And then it was paid out at one forty-five, fifty-nine. And then yours, Rhonda, was fifty-six, at fifty-six for one oh eight, fifty-six at sixty.
So her rate's higher?
Yes, and, and you're missing some information on here. And when she typed it in, she could have had a taco when she, the person who enters this, because that's not the mileage.
Those numbers can't be right, that's two dollars and seventy cents a mile.
Right, there's no way.
Where, where is this conference held at?
Uh, this conference. This was in Irving. No, Autumn, Florida. There's something missing on here and I believe it's the mileage and because it wasn't fifty-six. I would have to look it up. If I do that, I wouldn't mind doing that.
And then on the unpaid bills from the water and sewer fund, why are we buying Gatorade, coffee creamer, sugar, sunglasses?
What was it? Sun?
Sunglasses, Gatorade, coffee creamer, sugar.
What page are you on there, Ms.?
It's on unpaid bills detail for the water and sewer fund. The first one is the, the very top one under Brookshire Brothers, where it says water, toilet paper, Gatorade powder, coffee creamer. And then, uh, down at the bottom of that page, uh, man sells grocery for sugar. And then on the next page, okay lumber, on January third, there's a bunch of stuff, and then it says sunglasses.
Joan, on, on that, we, we actually didn't pass that. Those are unpaid bills, right?
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
So we actually voted not to pay.
Okay.
Until we found out what's going on.
And then the next thing is on your, on the agenda tonight, I see it's on there again to talk about, um, City Hall hours because it used to be closed for lunch and then it was brought up at another meeting and you decided to open it during lunch for people that can only make it there during lunchtime. And it looks like it's on the agenda again to consider closing it for lunch, which is gonna make it hard on people. So if it's hard to stagger lunches to get everybody in, maybe you ought to change the hours and be open from eight to six. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joan. Ms. Joan, I'd like to answer a couple of questions that you may have on that. The glasses? Those are safety glasses, I know that.
Oh, okay.
For our employees. So we're, that, that, for that. As far as the, uh, the Gatorade, I know that we use a lot of Gatorade during, during the summer hours. I don't know what, I don't know what they're using it for during these winter hours. The coffee and sugar, I, I, I said I wanted that stock a long time ago. If they want coffee and sugar, they can, they can buy their own.
Well, I worked, I did a facility that, that I had to have safety glasses and I had to pay for them myself.
Okay, well.
The company didn't pay for them.
I don't know about, I don't know about that, Ms. Joan. Hopefully that, we're gonna find out some more about, about that. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
No, thanks.
Larry.
Mayor, counsel, uh, just wanted to, uh, we were here tonight for two reasons, to, uh, see Mr. Glover and his students receive that award, we're proud of them. But we are having a meeting at seven-thirty at the school. Uh, it is in the band hall and it is to discuss, the architect will be there to discuss school improvement, renovations, et cetera. So we probably didn't plan very well. When we met in December, we had to work around his schedule. We did not think about the council meeting tonight. Uh, I've also been told, Charles, uh, we didn't do well because the college championship game's tonight. We've been catching it. Uh, initially, Mr. Raby, uh, we had it scheduled for six-thirty. Uh, it was brought to our attention by Karen and some others, uh, that Charles meeting was at six. We did get him to, uh, schedule it for seven-thirty, uh, and he'll drive back to the Austin area tonight, but he did do that. So anyone that's interested, uh, and counsel, uh, if y'all finish or you come at eight o'clock, we would like to have, uh, everyone we can, it is a community meeting.
Yes, sir, I had, I had a citizen talk to me today about not even knowing what y'all have planned.
Right.
About doing what.
Well, that's, that's what it is, to present, to present the plan, uh, what we might do, what we may not do. That's, that's why it's an open forum, uh, yea, nay, uh, that's what it's for.
Yes, sir, and I want to thank you and the principal and Sal.
Sal, Ms. Overton.
Ms. Overton, thank, yes.
Tisa Salz, we have four members here.
All of those members.
Mr. Blasco's wife is here, superintendent as well.
Yes, I want to thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Next. That's it, the town's citizen comments. Thank y'all once again very much for, for showing up. Okay, department reports, police department. Sean Martin.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Under our U C R reporting stats for, for our part one crimes, which include property crimes, burglary, murder of vehicles, thefts, um, we didn't have any reported crimes, uh, under those categories for December of this year compared to, we had three of last year. For our other crimes, which include the assaults, thefts and all other reports, we had five for December compared to ten of last year. We wrote three hundred and fifty-eight citations for the month of December compared to a hundred and fifty-four last year. We had, uh, we made eight arrests this month compared to nine of last year. And our top five calls for service for December were close patrols, neighborhood patrols, business checks, cemetery patrols and assist other agencies. Our total calls for service were five hundred and eighteen. That's the month of December. For our, for the calendar year of two thousand and fourteen, our part crime, part one crimes, we had twenty for two thousand and fourteen. For our other crimes, we had a total of a hundred and twenty-two. We issued three thousand seven hundred and forty-four citations for the year. We made a hundred and two arrests. We had three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine calls for service. We worked six hundred and seventy-eight hours a step. We issued, on step, we issued eighteen hundred and ninety-seven citations. Our top five calls for the service for the year were business checks, close patrols, knee complaints and neighborhood patrols and animal calls. And that is it.
Y'all been quite busy. Next, Public Works Director, Dean Carroll. Not here. You heard him? Okay, uh, Department of Municipal Court and Administration discussed by, do you want to take that on?
Court. Court.
The court, okay.
The report for December, there were three hundred and three citations filed by the, um, police department. There were twenty-six warning citations filed, thirty-nine warrants cleared, there were no collection letters and thirty-three warrants issued. And I was just going to mention that there is zero collection letters, but, uh, she has just taken this, um, this position and this next month you will see more collection letters. Um, I'm also going to read the report for Terry. Uh, she was unable to be here tonight, she was sick. Mayor and council members, our sales tax in January was twenty-three thousand eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. This is to, um, two point five nine percent down from last year at this time. Last year was two thousand, uh, twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. Uh, January starts a new, um, new sales tax year. So we're currently two point five nine percent for the year down. Uh, we also wanted to, she wants to welcome Walmart. They had their grand opening on Wednesday at seven-thirty in the morning, it was really cold. But we had a lot of people represented, represented there from our community and the turnout was good. And we would like to thank everyone for coming out and showing their support. Last travel stop is, uh, moving forward. The plans have been reviewed and approved. The final plat is on the agenda for approval tonight. And we are excited that they have chosen Italy for their location. Um, May ninth, two thousand and fifteen will be our election day. Uh, the deadline for filing application for a place on the ballot is January the twenty-eighth and through February the twenty-seventh. Uh, if you would like to run for a place on the ballot, applications can be picked up at City Hall. We, um, are currently, they're, even though they're currently available right now, however, they can't be turned in until January the twenty-eighth. The last day for submitting your application is February the twenty-seventh at five o'clock. Also on the ballot, you will, um, we will be reauthorized, reauthorized, having reauthorization of the local sales and youth tax at the rate of one-fourth and one percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair for municipal streets. To be prepar, uh, prepared, I have the ordinance called the election on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And, um, there's the rec, uh, recommended time to order an election is January the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen through February the tenth of two thousand and fifteen. The last to register to vote is March the tenth. Um, she also wanted to mention that her and I attended, will be attending the election law seminar, which is January the twenty-first through the twenty-third in Frisco. We also, um, just to add to that, we also went to an annexation seminar this, uh, last month as well, so.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. All right, that, they will conclude the departmental reports. Next will be regular session, number six, regular session. H, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding the approval contract between the city of Entley and K S A for engineering services associated with the design and construction of the new lift station to replace the existing Dale Evans Lift Station, K S A Engineering.
Mayor, counsel? Scott Olds with K S A Engineers. As you know, uh, part of the, uh, domino effect from, from the Lowe's Travel Center coming in is uh, we need to do some improvements on our existing lift station that's located that serves that area, all those, really those commercial restaurant businesses in that, in that area. So we've got a contractor for you tonight to hire us to complete the design, to work, help y'all work through the bidding process and then to help oversee the construction, contractors that we hired to do that work. I'm not sure what all you have in your packet, we've kind of gone back and forth on some different things. Our, the first we've given, uh, the city some numbers on a, on a new lift station to completely replace that existing lift station. Uh, and we also had some numbers for just upgrading the existing lift station. Uh, right now, the lift station is at, at its full capacity. We'll be adding about ten thousand gallons per day from the Lowe's Travel Center. We need to go in and put in some new pumps, larger pumps, it's gonna require upgrading the electrical there. Also, we're, we're looking at the wet well storage capacity. You have to have a certain volume of, uh, water that can be stored. The reason we initially recommended a new one is because we didn't think we had that volume in the existing wet well, we don't, so. Uh, Dean asks us to go back and look at a different, same issue, we're gonna look at trying to get some credit for the storage capacity that's out in the collection systems. You've got gravity lines that extend out from that lift station as well as manholes that, that can't count and qualify as storage. Uh, so we're gonna do a little more extra survey, a little more extra design calculations to see if we can utilize that and avoid having to do that, uh, new wet well. I'm not sure what all you have in front of you.
Well, I wish Dean was here. What did, I know that we, we have, uh, in our procedures that if we have something that is certain value that we need to send it out for bid, and I can't come up with that figure off the top of my head. Is it five thousand and over?
Is we don't have a construction?
Yes.
Yes, we, yeah, uh, really, you have to go for formal bids with, uh, with sealed bids, uh, at fifty thousand.
At fifty thousand, is that what ours is?
Uh, well, we, it's fifty to seventy-five, yeah.
Well, we're, we're just talking about our city policy. Rob, do you know how many bids we went out for on? Robin, do you know how many bids we went out for on this?
And this is not a bid from us, this is a professional engineering services, which is not a bidding process, that's actually, bidding is actually prohibited from selection of professional, professional services. It's a qualification-based selection.
Explain that to me.
So you, you hire professional services as a city based on the qualifications of the engineer, and it's not, it's not a price bid? The laws for professional services procurement?
Okay, I, I think I understand.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not that, it's not that we can't talk about what our fees are and costs and things like that and come to an agreement on it.
Sure.
We went through a little bit of that as well.
What's our, what's our timeframe for, I know they haven't even cut down.
No, they haven't broken ground, you know, but they're, but they're, they're anticipating getting pretty hard from what I understand and needing to get along. We've been, we've been looking at, at things as we go along, and I know there were needing some, some good firm numbers, so we've kind of put together some preliminary estimates on what things would cost, and we really need to start getting into our designs so we can refine those numbers and make sure we're good numbers, whether this existing capacity within the collection system is going to be sufficient, or if we are going to have to build additional wet well capacity. But we're comfortable that we're going to be able to, but we're not enough for sure until we get all the, the survey data in. We've got to survey how much we can store in there before, you know, obviously it overflows. There's some, there's a low point there where we collect so much that it's going to need to be.
So this is a, this is the, what Loves was going to absorb?
That's my understanding, is that, that Loves was going to pay for their impact
That's right.
on their system. And at this point, the, the lift station is functioning, it's at full capacity, but there's, there's not a plan to upgrade it immediately, this additional flow is making that upgrade immediate and required.
So have we gotten with Loves and, and said, okay, this is going to meet what we specify, and the cost looks good, and, and we're, you know, because it's kind of a third-party kind of thing between you, the city, and Loves, you know, because they have to come back and go.
Have, have they agreed to it, to the price?
I'm not aware.
And I know they had a meeting, and, and I, I couldn't go to it.
I would like to expand on the meeting.
Sure.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Do you mind, have you seen what? This is what we've got, this is what, you can come up here.
Yes. Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Do you have this?
Yes, we do.
So we know that we're looking at the same thing?
Yes, we do.
Okay. This is what we were talking about the other day in that meeting, I think there was, you, I forget, I forgot the lady's name was with you. We talked to him on speakerphone.
Yes.
And this is what we discussed right here. Are you in agreeance with this?
Yes, what we had discussed was getting some firm numbers, something with engineer seal, certainly part of Loves is going to be, and then they would make our contribution based on those numbers.
Yes, sir.
And I, I hope y'all seen, we did provide a letter to Dean, it was just late Friday, he reviewed it and said he thought that was what they were looking for, and I don't know where else that's been transmitted, I hope you've seen a copy of it or not.
Been through and, basically summarized.
Please, we need copies of this, please.
Yeah, I got it out, we're trying to get it out for this meeting, so I got it out late Friday, and I, because I'm going to give it to the street and my audience. His bid was to make him send it to the city.
Okay, back, back to this, this estimate?
Yes.
This good faith estimate is, I know they, you and Dean, Dixon was talking about these numbers, are these numbers still the same as what they were?
Yes, one thing that, that adjusted, we talked about some of the design surveying costs, and, and we did bring that budget down, and we had budgeted seven thousand dollars if we ever need to go, like I said, do some more extensive surveying within the collection system, timing, manuals, and things like that, and probably get a little conservative there, so it, it is a budget, it is an hourly reimbursable, so we generally provide you guys a budget on those hourly reimbursable, and then whatever's not spent, you know, just comes back. I feel comfortable reducing that, I think we reduce it to five thousand dollars in the actual contract that we presented from the seven. But other than that, all the other numbers were the same, there's just, it's just preliminary at this point, so we've included contingencies and things like that, just because we don't know what all we're going to find when we get in there and really start digging into it. And we are trying to rehab an existing one, which makes the numbers a little bit less exact than it would be if we were going for a completely new station where we had, knew what we were getting into. And I don't know what's your agreement with, with Loves is going to be, if it's going to be an amount up to, you know, if you're asking them, if this is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you're asking them to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand regardless of what it costs, or if you're coming back and saying that, or that they commit to paying up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, whatever the actual cost would be, so.
I think for the, to be fair to the city, the Loves should pay for what their impact is going to be, like say if they're at eighty percent of the impact that they're going to be using, and we have, still have twenty percent, then, you know, but I mean, we need to know that.
Yeah, the way, the way this is presented.
No, that's fair to them, I mean, you know, because, you know.
Yeah, this, this is presented as an upgrade from a current plant or lift station's at capacity up to the capacity that's necessary for Loves. We haven't added any additional, that may be something the city wants to consider, is putting in an extra twenty gallons per minute capacity for something in the future, because right now everything that's in our estimate is for the upgrade for Loves. It's probably a hundred percent.
Okay.
That's, that's fair.
Okay, some other I don't see as, doesn't apply to you, it applies to Loves also, is it in here where the?
They haven't seen this letter either.
This is my first time seeing it.
Yeah, yeah. They requested it the other day, and I could let him read it, go.
I'm just going to be blunt with you here, but this is what I don't see, I don't see that, that statement about y'all are paying for this, number one, and that y'all don't feel it, y'all are not going to contribute to any other upgrades in the future on this. Remember we talked about that?
Yes, but we, we had talked about doing this from two different perspectives. One was from the engineers' reports, that we have something that's based the numbers on for our maximum, and then second, we wanted something from the council that said, we, we have made our, our loads, we have paid our way, but anybody else that comes in and needs, you need to do an upgrade in the future, then Loves will pay for that.
Yeah, yeah.
If we come back and we have an increased load in your system, you know, we'll pay our way, but if there's a, you know, improvement in the future, this, this is Loves contribution.
This is Loves contribution?
We will pay for more than just, you know, our impact, we're going to pay for the improvements to the lift station, you know, taking up actual cost, actual cost to the city that's occasionally whatever.
Yeah, the closest thing to that would be at, at that last section on the first page.
Right.
It says we anticipate that the engineering construction costs to upgrade the existing lift station meet the increased capacity anticipated from Loves, which is one thousand gallons per day, will not exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Make a motion that we approve the agreement between KSA and the city.
I've got a first to approve the contract between KSA and the city of Italy on Dale Evans Lift, Lift Station Evaluation. I've got a second by Councilman Farmer. All in favor? Four in favor. Thank you. All right, item I, discussing considering necessary actions regarding the request by Lynn Dixon with Devolving Texas for the final, final plat approval of sixteen point seven-nine acres owned by Loves Truck Stop and Country Store Inc. being part of the Thomas K. Miller Survey, abstract number of seven zero four, and the William, William Michael Survey, abstract number six eight eight, Ellis County, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, as a P and Z, this was just, there's like three different lots there, and this was just to approve it, putting all that into one, one piece.
Basically, that's what I, I understood also.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the building or anything like that, just the length.
Correct, this has taken several pieces of pie out there and put them in the one, one instrument.
Right, and we, you know, we had no problem approving it last week.
Make a motion to increase the final plat, somebody, somebody Devolving Texas.
I'll say it.
I've got a first by Councilman Greg Richards to approve item I. I've got a second by Councilman Cochran. All in favor? Four in favor? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I'll get you your signed copies.
Do you have it now?
No, that's it, we just passed it. Item J, discussing considering necessary actions regarding the approval of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero one one two dash zero one, an ordinance by the city of, city council of the city of Italy, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on May the ninth, two thousand and fifteen, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two council members at large for terms of two years, and calling for a special election for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Italy at the rate of one-fourth of one percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets, establishing procedures for conduct of such election, providing other details relating to, to the holding of such election, providing a certability clause and providing an effective date. Has Miss Murdoch put this on there, and she's not here this evening? Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, this is just, this is just announcing that we have called for our election.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I've got a first by Councilman Guthrie to approve this ordinance, we've got a second by Councilman Richards. All in favor? Four yeas and one ayes. Did Mr. Dixon leave already? No, just reminded. Okay, item K, discussing considering necessary actions regarding the approval of a joint election agreement by the Italy Independent School District and the city of Italy to hold a joint election, May ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
I've got a first by Councilman Cochran, and a second by Councilman Greg Richards. All in favor? Four. Item L, discuss, consider necessary actions regarding, item L, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding prohibited parking of trucks, et cetera, over one and a half tons of certain, in certain districts. Chief Martin?
Yes, this came up, and I was thinking there's two specific instances, but I can only think of one off the top of my head. Basically, for our city ordinances right now prohibit truck tractors from driving on our city streets, but we don't have anything that's saying they can't park on the city street, or, I mean, not on the city street, I'm sorry, you know, like a driveway of a, of a resident. And if we don't see them driving down the street, obviously they're not in violation, but obvious, but if they're parking there, obviously we know they're driving down there. So we're kind of stuck in, in a way.
Stank out.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what was happening.
No, it's, it's parking. Are you sure? Because we passed that, that ordinance years ago.
I could not find one in our, in our thing. When I went through all the.
Yeah, that is, I thought we said we found it, but it may not have, but yeah.
Obviously, you can't park on the street, but like in a driveway or something, I don't know if it was separate, but I pulled the one that you should have a copy of, it was directly off of, Walks Hatchies is where I actually got this from, so it just prohibit them parking in residential, or regi, residential area instead of commercial, that would be the other part of it.
That would encompass multi-family residential areas also?
Basically, anything that's not commercial, and it has its, you know, for the services and stuff like that, and then public service.
Yes, John.
I know, thank you for letting me talk, that we don't have the money for the, for signs, but I still think you need to put up no truck signs on certain areas, because I, in fact, I've seen the county dump truck cut across from seventy-seven down across Couch Street to get to thirty-four. You know, because it's, because it's, the bridge is redone, and it's nice cement until you get to the blacktop, and, and, and there's other dump trucks I've seen cut across there too.
Mine Creek trucks too?
Yeah. You know, so, and I know we don't have money for, for signs to put up saying no trucks, but until you do, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to stop anybody.
Can you go ahead and get us an ordinance, and have you involved, grab the ordinance as far as what you're then talking about?
But did, did, do you already have an ordinance put together to?
I just pulled directly off of what, what Walks Hatchies.
Okay, so that's Walks Hatchies, where?
You should have a copy of that, as long as y'all learn it, the wording or.
If they unhooked the truck, truck is still too heavy, right? Well, I think, I think the way it reads, the other, we were, more than two axles on the rear, there were more than one axle was prohibited.
Well, one and a half times, so it dropped like.
Yeah, that's true. I think the, the ordinance was put together for, or, some of the trash trucks that picks up our debris were, were two axles on the rear, and that was tearing up our streets.
That's just been an agreement with us and the trash company to do that, there's nothing to say that they, that they, that they couldn't. We just asked them to do that, single axle, you know, on the downtown streets, and they run double axles on thirty-four and some of the, some of the others, but some of the schools, they have to run the double axle, I think, to get some of their dumpsters, so.
Seems like the double axle will tear up less than the single ones.
It's all in the turnip.
Okay.
The turning in the.
The turning in it.
Weight distribution, you know.
Heat of the day also.
So how does this affect someone that, let's say drives a, a three-ton service truck, and they live in town?
By the ordinance, they would be in their drive, in their driveway.
And I think we do have one citizen that is, does have.
There's several, I think several.
Well, I just said I know.
Welding trucks, drilling trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does it, you know, like I said, how does, how does it really impact our streets? And I know that's what they're trying to protect, and.
Most of those are ton, ton to a ton and a half, you don't have any three-ton service trucks, I don't know what you're talking about.
Some of those are four fifty, so they're.
What's an F seven fifty?
Is it?
That's a, that's a two-ton truck.
No, because mine's a seven fifty, my tow truck's a seven fifty, and it's, it's twenty-five nine, so it's under. And they're big, but they're, they're not as heavy per se.
Chief Martin, can I ask you a question? Do we have an ordinance on parking in the yards?
In the grass?
Doesn't make the neighborhood look.
Then why isn't there a course?
You gotta come to your bowels.
So we have a.
I mean, here's, here, here's, we'll take South, I'll give you, I'll give you South Ward, for example, about parking. It's against anyone, it's for the parking on the street. So we don't want to park on the street because it's a traffic hazard, but then if you have more than two or three cars, where, where, you know, where do you want to park them if, for multiple?
Is that the city's responsibility? No.
But it's common sense.
But it's not the city's responsibility to park his parking park, someone who has ten cars.
That's right. And, but, you know, if I'm gonna pull my car in my front yard, I should be added.
No.
That looks, that looks trash. That's all right, it does.
I know, but I mean, you know.
That's why you have driveway.
I understand. I'm just saying, you know, property rights, you know.
For a motorhome and a double, I'm pretty much, you own that property, but we have rights to say you can't.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. We have zoning.
We want to protect the neighborhoods that we live in.
That's kind of what's going to happen.
Thank you for answering my question.
That, that particular ordinance that you looked up, the, the Walk Hatchies, that, that covers all that stuff, parking in the yard, uh, working on cars in the street, I mean, it, it covered that whole realm. And that's why I thought we passed that years ago, because I brought that, that same ordinance.
We did pass it.
Yeah. It's, it's somewhere, because like I said, we brought that same ordinance, and we, we passed it years ago. But I mean, if we can't find it, I mean, that's.
That's the only one I could find was, was the, that had to deal with the, the trucks driving in the street, not the, the city parking.
Yeah. I, I mean, you could get that same, I mean, it's, it's the same ordinance. I mean, we may have to, if it's lost in space somewhere, or, uh, to save aid it, then we might revisit it, bring it back up. Bye, guys. Good luck, y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
That's real soon, man. Hold down the shit till we get there.
We'll be there in ten minutes.
Talk real slow.
I would just, I would just say, if I could, go ahead and get that, that, go ahead and get that full ordinance and, and look at it, and we'd probably get Ed to draft this agreement to us for consideration.
Let's put, um, this until.
Oh, yeah, he's still.
Yeah, let's do that. I'll make a motion, um, that we, um, take no action on this.
I've got a, a motion on the floor from Councilman Cochran to take no action on this until further, uh, consultation with the city attorney.
Second.
Got a second by Councilman Guthrie. This man. Look, all in favor? Four. M, discussing taking this, considering necessary actions regarding the installation of two thirty-mile-an-hour speed limit signs on College Street. From what I understand, it's, the, the speed limit is already thirty, but we're wanting to put up the signs.
There's one in my ditch, in my ditch, in front of my house, coming off six sixty-seven.
Yeah, so it came up to me and asked if we could put one so that, so we probably only need one then.
Yeah, because I think, yeah, it's a, we get around it all the time. Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a thirty-mile-an-hour, so as soon as they come off six sixty-seven, it's about halfway down my.
And that's the area that they wanted it in?
Right. Yeah, there's one, there's one there.
Okay, so there's one coming from six six seven, two, with Travis Street?
Coming this way, yeah.
To Travis, on north. Is there one? I didn't see it. Is there one going that way? I know there's a twenty-mile-an-hour.
There needs, there probably needs to be put one just south of, or right at Dilworth, after they leave the school zone, probably where it really needs to be. So they know they're in the school zone.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we pick up the one by Rodney's house and move it somewhere?
Well, they need it. They, they need it coming off that highway. Yeah, they, they need to know, hey, at least start slowing down, you know, it's, it's thirty. Yeah, like they do.
Yeah, and that was his complaint, because he lives right across the county barn. He said these guys are flying.
Yeah. Now, there's a sign there.
One wire there, too. One of your stop signs is completely pulled up out of the ground, too, at Dilworth.
Seth, I, I, I can't hear you, Brian.
There's a stop sign pulled completely out of the ground at Dilworth, and they got forty-five to fifty in that block on Dilworth, too.
Dilworth and Dilworth and College?
Yeah, it's completely, the whole thing's pulled up. It's lane and ditch.
There's also no C Road that's down.
Get your fine city crew to put it back up.
Somebody did.
Well, the one at C Road is also pulled out.
I wrote a work order up.
Okay, you see that?
It wasn't an accident.
C Road.
Yeah, C Road in Southmore.
Could you look at College and maybe kind of determine where we could use a couple, and then go ahead and, and try to, you know, see about getting them up?
Yeah.
Is that what you're stating?
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah. I'll make motion, um, that we approve install them, uh, two thirty-mile-an-hour stop signs on College Street. I guess I should, should I, because I leave one.
Yeah, you better.
No, we need, it, it needs to be done from there.
I'll say. Okay, I've got a motion to approve item M, the two thirty-mile-an-hour speed signs. I've got a second by Councilman Guthrie. All in favor? Yes, sir. I didn't see you. Okay, I've got four, four yeas. Discussing considering necessary actions regarding placing financials on the city website. Councilman Farmer, you want?
Yeah, I, um, we've been looking at other cities, and the citizens have been asking us if we can place our financials on our website, whether it be our profit loss, and I, I think Terry was talking about, uh, our check registry, at, at least for now, and then we can go in detail a little more. Uh, but I think if we had that up, it would kind of answer a lot of questions for our citizens. They can just go on, take a look, they can bring any issues up to us that they want. Um, I have talked to Terry about it. Um, she's wanting to do that as well, so I just needed to put it up to you guys.
What we're trying, what we're trying to achieve is, uh, they have this, uh, this is put out by the Controller's Office, and it's a trans, uh, Texas transparency, and they actually grade you on how transparent your city is, and you, you get a, um, a bronze, a silver, and a gold, and that, you know, that total transparency is, is what we're trying to achieve. I've got one of these, if anybody wants to take a look at it, and uh, that's, that's the reason for this, uh, this ord, uh, for this, uh, action of it tonight.
What color are we?
We don't have.
I had it flagged six months ago.
If it was red, yellow, or green, we'd be red.
But I mean, something to strive for.
And I, I can say that Terry is working on that. Todd Cave, Cave came Friday. He went over, um, different ways, uh, that we can do this. There's, there's going to be several different options, but the way it looks is we'll be able to put all of those things onto our website, and, um, it will be open to the public. Anybody connects us.
And, and, and regards to that, too, um, that means our city website's going to be changed, like how it looks. Um, Terry's working on that as well, kind of get it modernized.
And updated? I've been waiting for two years for a message from the mayor, and it keeps saying coming soon or something.
Yeah, it, it needs to, not only information, but interactive. Like I said, we've got where you can pay your water bill, we've got, you know, where you can maybe put in a work order, and you can, uh, maybe get, even some feedback on it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That's the next action. Sorry. I'll make a motion, um, that we, uh, place our financials on, on the, the city website.
I've got a motion to put the, uh, financials on the city website by Councilman Cochran.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Guthrie. All in favor? Four yeas. Item O, discuss and considering necessary actions regarding placing work orders on the website for submitting and checking status for work orders on the website.
Why didn't you make this a single motion?
Because they're, well, it wasn't supposed to go in like that.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's not.
So the reason why I wanted this on here, um, I've talked to a few citizens, and again, after hearing people talk tonight, it's gonna stop from the multiple work orders. You can go in, check the status, see if it's done. If it's not done, then we can submit a case, hey, why is it being checked off and saying it's done when it wasn't taken care of, like going back to the whole accountability issue, right, um, and being productive. I, I think this is going to be a way for our citizens to be updated, instead of having to come up here every day, putting in another work order, and for us, I mean, if we wanted to check and take a look at it, we'd be able to pull it up as well, if a citizen, uh, approached us about it.
She also talked to Todd Cave on that as well.
Okay.
Make a motion to do the work orders also?
I've got a motion to, uh, approve the work order, uh, item O, by Councilman Guthrie. I've got a second by Councilman Farmer. All in favor? Four yeas. Item P, discussing considering necessary actions regarding paying officers time and a half for step. Councilman Farmer.
All right, um. Okay, so this one, basically what's going to happen, item P and Q, we'll kind of coincide a little, but, um, right now, we're paying our officers for step, and we're not allowed per law to pay them contract labor, so we technically would have to pay them time and a half to fall within the law. We, we had a government grant at one point, and they funded that. That government grant is no longer. Um, the chief and I, we sat down with Sergeant Pitts, and we figured out, I mean, the numbers, and the numbers, I mean, we'd be okay by doing the time and a half because step actually pays for itself. Um, as, as they, tickets come in, we can also allot more money going back into step. So we, we're, I think we're going to reevaluate in March, kind of see where we are, um, but he's going to keep a close eye on it, uh, as far as like the time and a half goes. But per law, we have to pay these guys time and a half.
And so what does step stand for, Dan?
Select the Traffic Improvement Program.
Okay, thank you.
Only for speed.
Okay. Do we have it in the budget right now, list this contract label?
Yes, so that's what the Q is going to be over, is to amend the budget in the line item.
From contract labor to overtime?
To overtime, yeah.
There is four hundred and thirty-five hours there total.
Right.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we made officers time and a half for their step.
I've got a motion from Councilman Cochran to approve the, uh, the pay of officers for time and a half. I've got a second by Councilman Guthrie. All in favor? Four yeas. Item Q, consider, discussing considering necessary actions regarding the approval of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero one, that, zero one, one two, dash zero two, an ordinance of the City of Italy, Texas amending the general, general fund budget for fiscal year twenty thousand, correction, twenty fourteen through twenty fifteen, to provide for line item transfers for police officers, overtime pay for step, and providing an effective date. I've got a, got a, a motion by Councilman Cochran to approve item Q, and seconded by Councilman Richards. All in favor? Item R, discussing considering necessary actions regarding the selling of old machine tape to Mayor Hobbs for fifty cents a roll. Uh, with this being it's, uh, has something other to do with me, I'm going to turn the, uh, I'm going to excuse myself and leave the room, and I want to turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim, Robyn Guthrie.
I have no idea what this is.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you can't vote or vote. Can you tell us what the, the tape is and, and, yeah?
I can't discuss it.
I, I can, I can fill you in, because I was.
You can't discuss it, you can't, you just can't vote on it.
You just can't vote.
Can you report in the discussion? Do I have to get up?
Yeah, he wants to leave.
I'm leaving.
Right.
I wouldn't leave.
I'm leaving.
Well, if we, let's hold on, hold on. Okay, you can leave, but if we don't know what we're talking about.
I know what it is.
Okay, okay. If somebody, if you leave, and we're sitting there going.
He can tell what it is, what, what the object is, but he can't discuss it.
Okay, well, from what I understand, can't.
No, you can't discuss it.
Machine tape. What is machine tape?
It's, it's the, uh, credit card tape that, that we used to use. Um, basically, he came to me asking, what, you know, what we could do about, and that's when we put it on the agenda and then take it through council. We're going to destroy it. We're going to throw it away. His credit card machines out at his store uses that same credit card tape, so he wants to purchase it from the city.
Is he going to print on the other side of it, or?
What?
It's already been printed out.
No, it hasn't. No, it's, it's brand new. It's brand new.
So we have surplus of it, and we're going to sell.
Yeah, because we're going to throw it away, because it's our new machine, they're, they're new, so it doesn't take that tape anymore.
How much, how much are we talking about?
It's like a half a case.
And so we're talking about fifty cents a roll, so we're talking about maybe twelve bucks?
That I don't know. I mean, that's not, I mean, that's probably going to be like, probably under twenty bucks, most likely. He just wants the approval and go through the process, the right process for him to purchase it.
We need to probably, um, take bids for that, and I know that's really petty, but I mean, you know, if, if some other citizen wants that, you know, but, I mean, it's like the school, you know, they have their, their buses, and they, they have bids, and, and I might be wrong, it might be a, a, a limit, you know, where, I don't know. I just wondered, like I said, we need to do the right procedure.
And I think we are following procedure.
Okay.
And, and the reason I say that, it's been back from the vault for years.
Yeah.
Nobody's kind of came up, and he wanted, he saw it, and he, he noticed that it fit his register stuff, so he was like, can I purchase it since you're going to throw it away? I mean, if we were talking hundreds and hundreds of dollars, I'd say, okay, maybe, maybe we can see.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not against it, but I'm just.
Probably ten to fifteen dollars.
If a citizen comes back and says, I didn't know about that, and I wanted that.
Okay, yeah, no, I see your point on that.
And, and I have no problem with, with him taking, I like, I mean, I like stuff that, that we're going to throw away to be used.
Right.
For anybody, but, but we can't select a, just because, and he has access to the vault, so there's no citizen out there that goes, you know, well, if I could go to the back of the vault, I would have wanted it, too.
Right, no, it's true.
You know, so, uh, I mean, I.
I would leave it.
I don't have much money.
I would, I would say we just, either call the TML attorney, just to, what would be the procedure on selling surplus? I don't know why it would be any different than selling a police car or anything else.
Exactly.
You have to, I would think.
And there might be a dollar limit that where it says if it's.
And I don't know, that's what I'm saying, we're contacting.
Maybe you put it out on the website a little bit, just so.
I'd contact TML.
Or, or put a sign.
Or they'd find out real quick what it would, what it would cost.
And, and, and the beauty of, the beauty of TML, they, like I said, they have a, it is free.
Yeah, I suppose they call TML, not.
Exactly, exactly.
Can, can y'all call TML and ask them?
And then whatever you find out, maybe i- if we don't have to post it, or whatever, if we need to post a sign at City Hall.
And on the city website.
Yeah, but, but, but also, but also, we need to probably, um, create an ordinance that says if we have a surplus, that we must put it out, or we must, um, present it to, that way we don't, we don't have to worry about it, and it's just automatic. They have this, and then, um, it won't come before us again, because they know the procedures, and that's what we're supposed to do, is, is not micromanage, but to give them the procedures to, to do it, and then they do it, the way I understand it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I.
Just find out.
Let's take, let's, um, I'll make a motion that we take no action on this until we get further, um, um, information from TML.
I have a motion by Mr. Cochran to take no action.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Mr. Farmer, all in favor? Can you get your man?
Yes, sir.
The man.
Yes, sir, I will.
Almost up. Almost done. So just don't throw it away until we find out.
Throw it away and tell them before you throw it.
Just disappear.
Yeah, they, they want to send it down.
We take no action. No, we're gonna, for now, we gotta get more information.
Okay. We're gonna hold on to it though, too, we find out.
Yeah, that's right.
Well...
Yeah, we know how many is there, too.
Yeah. That's right. Alright. You're back in charge.
Okay, so item R, there's no action taken. At this time, is that what I understood?
Yes, sir.
Good, item S, discussing considering necessary actions regarding city hall closing for lunch. Would you be care to expand on that for Ms. Murdock, or you wanna?
I'd prefer to, I mean, I really, I know that she, um, she wanted to change it due to the lack of people being, I don't know, off at different times, I believe is what she said.
Yes, that's what she kind of, uh, I'll talk to her.
If someone is absent.
Well, and that, that was her argument last time, and we still passed it.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question. If, uh, if you're, anybody, they're the only person that's there at the city, um, can they do all the functions? Like, can they take the water payment?
Are we all across from?
Yeah, to, to a certain extent, I know they can't...
To a certain extent.
Right.
The court is probably the only one that does not, um, have, we do have backup.
Yeah.
And we can stagger that way, but if someone's sick or someone's out, you can't stagger that.
Well, at least the, at least it's open for somebody to go in and ask the questions.
Right.
And then they may have to be instructed, I'm sorry, that individual's not here right now. They will be back at one thirty.
That's right.
And come back then.
Right.
Instead of just going and pulling on the door, and nobody in there.
That's right.
I agree.
Cause I, I, a lot of citizens have difficulty, think you, you know, I work eight to five, and I'm, you know, I, and they're closed when I'm off.
But we are mainly off, off strange pretty much, in several categories.
One of the issues that was, that was brought up is that when they were leaving, and only one lady was in there. It's a safety, it's a safety issue also, for the protection of our employees singularly. Yeah, yeah, that was an issue that was brought up.
You know, they're, they're behind, I just, I glance, I don't know, it's, you know, not hard, but I mean, it's not like they...
It's pretty big ones.
Is it? Yeah, and so, that's not...
I mean, it's not...
No.
I'm not gonna sit there and jump through it.
No, I, that's what I'm saying, I mean, at least there's, um...
If somebody wanted to get registered, stick it.
For the little one fifty.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. I make a motion, we take no action on item S.
I've got a motion by Councilman Cochran, take no action on item S. Seconded by Councilman Farmer. Okay, all, all in favor? Okay. Alright, that concludes this meeting, as far as the, uh, consent items go. We'll move to number seven, council, councilman comments. Who else should lead up on this?
I would, Captain. Alright. Um, I'd like to, to thank the council, um, for coming together and, and, uh, working for the best interest of the city. I know we're, we're working hard. I know the citizens out there that are, um, holding our feet to the fire, and I appreciate that. Um, we're working to get that transparency that, uh, yeah, I hear and I'm talking to you. And, and John too, I mean, everyone that, uh...
We're watching you, Tom.
That cares, sure, everyone that cares about this city and sees something that's wrong, has, um, an obligation in my eyes to, to, to tell us about it, and say, you guys are doing it wrong, and you, you need to fix this. You need to, you know, and, um, we are a small town, and, and, and I, I appreciate that. Cause it, everything impacts everybody else, no matter where you live. And, um, I just, um, appreciate the, the council and the citizens that, uh, that come up and, uh, and, and be here for the, for the meeting. You guys that are sitting out there supporting. So, thank y'all.
Councilman Farmer.
I think you kind of touched on everything, but, um, I would like to encourage everyone that wants me to leave here to go over to the school and kind of support them. It's not only the city that helps a town grow, but it's also the school district. So anybody that can go over there and support them would be appreciated.
Can I say something else? My time's gone. Uh, I, no, I was there, on the exception of what, what they've got going on over there. And it's really exciting, and it's gonna be great for the whole community. Um, a track that's gonna be available, um, to, for our kids, you know, we've got some star athletes that, uh, it's, we don't, you know, when you tell them that we don't have a track, and we have people that have gone to state, you know, several times, and it's going to LSU. And, uh, but it, it's gonna benefit the whole community. Um, yes, there'll be some, probably some cost involved, how it impacts, but, um, this, these are our kids, and this is our future. And, uh, it, it's exciting. It's what they've got going on tonight, so I'll shut up, so we can get down there.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Gray.
Well, I thank everyone for coming, and, uh, chief, congratulations guys that got through work tonight. We're proud of them, proud of you and the job you're doing. And your report shows that y'all are doing an excellent job, and we appreciate that. Uh, the other, uh, water department and city hall, the ladies are doing a good job, and we appreciate that. And, uh, just remember, we're here for you, if you need us.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Guthrie.
Um, reiterate, I thank everyone for coming out, and really thank y'all for, like I said, bringing some of these things to our attention. Um, and we'll just keep working hard on, on trying to, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. And we really need to set a workshop probably at some point to try to sit down and figure out if we're paying for coffee and sugar and the thing that we are not gonna pay for, Gatorade, you know, what, whatever, you know, those, those type of things. We need to get down, sit down with our employees and tell them what we are gonna buy and what we're not gonna buy. So, that's something we need to work on getting in the near future.
Yeah.
Most definitely. Thank you, uh, Councilman Guthrie. I want to reiterate, it's basically the same thing that everybody's talked about. Karen, thank you for being here for the meal.
Welcome.
Uh, Ms. Kowalski, your questions? Prompted a lot of things going on, uh, and the rest of the citizens. I know that Mr. Farmer's, has done a lot.